We are well represented, 100 percent. So, we will proceed with the meeting tonight. First thing we're gonna do is do the invocation, and Ms. Hartman's gonna do that for us, and we'll take it from there.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, that we live in a city where all are encouraged and welcome to be an integral part of our community. We are blessed by their ideas, their talents, their visions, which they so graciously share with us. Please be with our staff and council, give us discernment and wisdom as we conduct the business of the city. May our decisions be motivated by goodness and spirit-led as we handle each issue at tonight's meetings and at all times. In your son's name we pray, amen.
We're gonna thank the leaders for not to impeach. Okay? He's in, okay?
There it is, there it is.
I beg your leadings to the side.
To the side. The United States of America, and the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Chief, were there anybody, any comments, citizens? Welcome, everybody. Appreciate your being here tonight. So, I will try to speak up. We have adjusted the speaker system to some degree, so we don't know if that's the right way or not, but anyway, please let us know after the meeting, okay? Okay, first of all, Alan, just step up. I know you got your address here, but if you'll stay for the record, please, I appreciate it.
My name's Alan Hydeley, I live on 3810, Rose Rock, Oakmont Park. I just wanna comment and compliment all y'all on what you've done over there. The park's cool in the park tonight. Compared to last year, it's day and night difference, especially in the evenings. I mean, we saw our issues during the days, some of the traffic and the speeding going on still, but at night, it's just, it's totally different. I just want to thank you all for doing that.
We don't get many of those "thank yous."
If you sound good, I want to let you know.
Are you sure you don't have more to say? Keep going, yeah.
Tom Edwards.
Thank you, I'm gonna hand it out, two handed. I've got two topics, and the first is a group photo. I want to invite the city council to participate. And the photo's something like this. This photo was taken on Valentine's Day, 1898, at Tanyard Springs, right over here. And, within the next few weeks, there's a lot of significance to this photograph, which I won't really get into, but Frank Morgan is in the center, has an 18-year-old. We'll talk, you'll hear more about that later. Anyway, we're gonna have a group photo. The finished, the last thing we're doing with the park over here is a permanent sign that's required by Texas Department of Wildlife. It's gonna have an aerial photograph taken by Jim Reed in Chicago, he's offered to do it for us, once we're finished, and we're getting close. But before, and on that day we take the photograph, if you'll flip to the other side of the page, 93 names of people who have contributed to this project. And I want to invite every one of them to show up and be part of a group photograph, standing on that sidewalk in front of the park. So, in 123 years from now, I mean, this was 123 years ago, that would be 2244. People can walk by and see your faces and remember what happened, how this park went through. So, we'll let you know when the date is, we're working on it, should be soon. Dennis says we should wait till the fall, but I'm just cool, I don't wanna wait any longer than we have to, so I hope it will be in July, early August. That's my first topic. The second topic is, just to point out, that 10 years ago this month, your EDC had its first meeting in this room. There's two original members still kicking from the seven-member EDC board, and it looks like I'm outlasting Dennis Green, 'cause he's off. But during that 10 years, I worked with six, Morgan's Point City Managers, if you count two of those. And I just wanna point out, that makes it hard to get things done. I loved every one of them, but then you start over and you build relationships, and it makes it hard. And I just wanna say, if you could let this guy, you could put up with him for five years, you'd be surprised what things could happen to him. 10 years would be transformational. So, I just want to suggest that the revolving door on the city manager's office be Governor Rivers.
Thank you, Tom. I wanna make one comment for you. I was, I had drink kids here this last weekend. I'm gonna tell you what, this park over here was highly used. I mean, every time, I came in here four times over a four-day period, and every time I came down, it was crowded. And I mean, people had good reviews on it, so you did a great job, and we appreciate it. So, I know you're gonna finish the landscaping, you need to do that. Okay, Jim, Matt Carter?
That's bad, that's okay. To those of you who don't mean playing too bad, I've been around here for a few years now. I've lived down on Tanyard Road, on the last house on the left. And if you've ever been down to the park more than twice in the last 10 years, you've seen me. I'm the guy that sits out there in the sunshine and watching the world go by. And let me tell you something, the changes in the last couple of weeks has been just absolutely heavenly. Got nobody riding up and down the street screaming their lungs out with their radios blasting, trying to make the last 100 yards down to the lake in a half a second, you know? That don't happen anymore. I haven't had anybody pounding on my door at 3:30 in the morning to get a jump start out of the park because they passed out in their car with a radio. That's a good one. Never mind all the trash from McDonald's that ends up in my yard. I mean, I go down there for a Big Mac every now and again, but nothing wrong with the trash that I get. Now, we're gonna talk about beer cans. Don't drink, but I got beer cans that are all in my yard every now and again, and I get real tired of that real quick. So, as for me, I'm all in favor of keeping that park just the way it is now. Let's keep it closed at dusk. We have a lot of people down there, and quite frankly, not all of them are up to good things, you know? So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Denise, it's your turn.
I'm Denise Snyder at 114 Great Woods Loop. She's my neighbor, Donna. I just wanna say, honor the office. I was at the Capitol today, and I'm pretty frustrated. I have emailed each and every one of those that left, "Please honor the office, you represent the citizens of Morgan's Point." We're not always gonna get our wants and our desires done. There are times I go to the Capitol, I close my mouth, and I just wait for my opportunity. But we represent this community. I voted most of you in office. I took my time to do that. Take your time, communicate with each other, and honor Morgan's Point with your time. So, thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you very much. Okay. Think of their...
Yes, could I just say, I handed out that building journal thing, so you could open it to the center and admire. And that's enough. I think, you know, some of you might not have seen that when I was in the building journal.
Oh, yeah. That is good. Logan, are you here? Your turn.
Hi there, I'm Logan Leonard. I live on 27 Rosewood Drive. I am starting to do my Eagle project, and I am, one of my Eagle projects for is to have neighborhood beautification. So, I decided I might call Park for this a couple of months ago, or about a year ago-ish. My parents really needed to have their garbage can holder replaced, it was all raggedy and falling apart to bits. So, me and my friend, we built, my parents knew one. Works out great, it's still standing today, it's looking amazing. And, so, I was thinking of ideas to help my community with my Eagle Scout project, and there's of course, you know, going around on the lawn, mulching, trimming, and I figured a little bit more long-term would be keeping the streets clean of trash. Now, of course, there's, you know, rowdy teenagers that don't exactly help with that, but, you know, wildlife, you know, runs a bunch here, and I love it, I love all the little creatures that we have, but they can be a little messy, you know, raccoons, possums, you know, deer even. And, so, I wanted to help prevent them from being able to get into our garbage, not only just to stop, you know, garbage being out on the streets, but also, you know, to help them, help prevent animals from choking or eating something that they're not supposed to. Like, let alone the fact avocados are like really bad for animals, certain animals. So, I wanna keep, you know, the animals safe, I wanna keep the streets clean, and so, I am building 10 garbage can holders, and they are a little bit expensive, they're pretty heavy on the lumber side, but I am planning to take financial responsibility for that. I got a job, I'm looking for sponsors. And so, I was looking for approval of the city council, if I could buy these garbage can holders, they're not permanent or anything, they're movable, they're disposable, they last pretty long, because they're treated with wood. They look pretty nice, in my opinion, that's just me though, but yes, I am looking for approval from the city council if I can distribute these.
I certainly appreciate that, I think that's a very big endeavor on your part. The only thing I ask, would you maybe run a drawing or concept by the city manager, just be sure it is, you know, compatible with the area, that's the only thing is, but I think it's a great idea, but run it by him, just to be sure, if you don't mind, but if you'll do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we have a picture of it here.
A little? Did I let you see that?
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you place them, the only thing I'd kinda caution you is, make sure they're not a safety hazard from a traffic perspective. You know, sometimes people plant trees real close to the road, and you can't see around them, so maybe make sure that they're, when you place them, that they're up close to the house or something, just so they're not a traffic hazard.
That is my plan, is to keep them, if you look on the thing...
Yeah, I saw this, this one's up by the house, yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's mine, actually, that's mine, built years ago. I do think I'm gonna get better, that it is 14-year-old me and my friend just trying to bag wood together.
It looks good.
Thank you. But I do have a little bit more of a concrete plan to make these, so, yes, I do plan on having them next to the house. Of course, I will, if someone does want them near the road, I'll try and accommodate, make them smaller, you know, try and encourage them to keep it away from the street, but yes, thank you for your concern.
Thank you for what you're doing, it's really nice.
Does anybody on the council have any questions, or any... I'm sorry, for five things together, I didn't see that originally, but Dalton just right said he's looked at it, and we're okay.
Yeah, and if you need any help or have any questions, please come by City Hall, and I'll make myself available.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Thanks, Logan.
Okay, going on to our regular agenda. Just item number one to discuss and take appropriate action, the minutes for the June 8th Regular Session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn or accept?
I'll take the motion, pass the minutes for June 8th, 2021 Regular Session.
Second, Bruce. Any questions, any discussion? Make case, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next one we're gonna go to is, we're gonna talk to...
Excuse me, we've got somebody to...
Oh.
She's at the bottom of the...
Oh, oh, excuse me.
How could we forget you, Jimin?
Jimin, don't think you're using a footnote on this, though. I mean, that was below the mark.
She always wants to be last.
Yeah, I gotta just gab a little, okay, come on. You know I give you a hard time.
I'm just here to talk about our library's summer reading program. It will be on the Saturday, July 24th, 31st, August 7th, and 14th, from 10 to 12. And, our theme is, is water wet. I think you might find it interesting. And I just wanted to say, oh, first of all, if anybody wants to purchase a children's book on water, they may, to the library, be welcome, be welcome. And I, in my 20 years of volunteering with the library, I think I've only seen one or two council members at any of the summer reading programs. It might be nice if you might come by one of them and just see what the volunteers are doing with the children of Morgan's Point Resort to emphasize reading. And, you might find out if the water is wet.
Thanks, Jimin.
Thank you, Jimin. I'll go do that to you again, if you don't do it to me. Okay, back on our regular agenda, I think we had a motion that was made, executive. Okay, we're okay on that, we passed it, then we're going on to the next one, which, Mr. Hobbs, I think we're gonna go straight to you. Can you give us your information?
One thing, just to FYI, we've got one planning zoning committee member that is not going to re-up their appointment. She will be coming off, Andrea Jenkins will be coming off in July. I have also been contacted by Michael Ortega, who was on our planning and zoning before, and I've asked him to fill out paperwork at City Hall to be able to be reconsidered again at our next meeting. So, at the end, at the end of July, we'll be able to show that coming off, and then take another look at Michael Ortega and see if we can bring him on, which will keep us at our full committee member. If you have anybody else that would like to come on with the planning and zoning, by all means, please come to City Hall and fill out that paperwork. Okay, down to the agenda items. We had two agenda items on our planning and zoning this, on June 22nd. First one was a variance request, and that variance request was made by John and Maggie Forrest, who live at 70 Oakmont Circle. They've asked to construct a carport at their home, which would extend into the 25-foot setback. Since we now have carport ordinance for homes in Morgan's Point Resort, the planning and zoning committee has recommended moving this forward to City Council for consideration of the request, with conditions of the carport design and construction to be aesthetically pleasing to the home and surrounding properties. So, the Forrests will submit their plan for design and building materials for approval by two Morgan's Point Resorts. So, that's our first variance request. The second item, well, that way you'll get rid of them, is for an accessory building request. This is for construction of an accessory building submitted by James Terran Boney, who live at 15 Beach Comer, Morgan's Point Resort. They own two additional properties between the dam and Morgan's Point Road, and the accessory building will be placed on one of those two additional properties. The planning and zoning committee discussed this. Additional properties were contiguous, part of their current residence, and since there's a green easement between the two, there was some concern about it not being contiguous. But the planning and zoning committee recommended moving this forward to City Council with the following conditions. The two additional properties should be converted into one combined flat with the accessory building placed on the property as requested. This will allow for a sale of the additional properties in the future to have enough space to build a single-family residence and still follow Morgan's Point Resort accessory building ordinance. And those are the two items we have for the...
Were the parties involved agreeable to these conditions? Were they parties involved, or are they agreeable to these conditions?
Yes. I think Dalton would agree that when we had our discussion with it, we were pretty specific about what we would wanna see for the flat, if the two pieces of property move into one big large flat, and on the carport, they were agreeable to coming back and giving that design a look. We had, we had the design look that we had approved prior, a couple months ago, I believe it was. They had a real nice carport, and did extend out into their 25-foot setback, and we approved it, I think we moved it forward, and y'all, y'all looked at it as well, we approved it as well.
Appreciate it. I know it's a gifted item, but we're gonna go ahead and go with the items right here. I think we do, need to do them separately, with item four being the one, the carport on Oakmont Circle. Do you hear a motion? Or, if you have any questions, we'll press aggressive at that time.
You know, I've read over it, and I drove by the house and everything. It's still a little confusing, I know the setback line's 25, I know that the 10-foot is sitting right away, so we're talking about 35 feet. What is the actual amount of variance they're asking for? 10 feet, 5?
From the front of their house out, as far as their carport would go, maybe from the front portion of the house, 10 feet out, and then covering the driveway currently there.
Which would be about 5 feet of variance over the front 25...
That's what I'm asking, yeah, the actual variance would be for 5 feet, oh, okay, that's...
40 foot from house to the street or property line, 25 foot variance based off the ordinance. They're asking for a 20-foot building, which would be a 5-foot variance.
Okay, and that was my question, so are they really asking for 5 feet?
And I haven't, are they here tonight?
In the way back of the room. I know the one that we approved, the only two we've approved have, were had disabilities. But I know one of the questions that y'all ask yourself is, are we allowing proper use of the property that they have? So, that's why I was kinda getting an idea of the footage, so there's, and it faces the main road, so it's not gonna be blocking. I always worry about traffic, you know, when you come out on the streets and you've got trees or a building or something, and you've been, it's not safe, but this faces the main road. And I think that they agreed that they were gonna make it very aesthetically pleasing for their neighbors, and they're asking for 5 feet. And also, I know that their, the garage that they have evidently wasn't closed when you bought it, or...
Correct, we did not have it closed, it was already closed.
Okay, so they, so they really don't have a garage, so this would be the only thing they have. So, I think because of that, and allowing them the proper use of their property, it's only a 5-foot restriction, and they're gonna make it very attractive. I move that we agree with the planning and zoning.
I've got one quick, I think if I read this correctly, that the carport is actually gonna be attached to the house, or it'll be freestanding?
I will let that...
I'm sorry?
Is the carport actually gonna be attached to the house, or is it gonna be freestanding?
I don't know, as close as can be, or if that's doable, absolutely. I mean, it is going to be connected or bumped up against, it will be a flowing, yeah, built entity there.
Okay, so basically, the material's gonna be something that would match with the house?
Correct, yes, and it will match the house, and it will be very appealing.
Yeah, we showed the picture of one of the variances that we did, and they had, they had liked the one that had the wood and the shingle, or something similar to that.
That looks really good, that looks really good.
We're very agreeable to that picture, it's beautiful, definitely stunning. Unfortunately, no wood is through the roof right now, so...
And that's, yes.
If y'all approve, it would be really helpful, I would just like to, if you don't mind, my call off, would the approval be good for, meaning, as money is paid to buy the wood required for that, we may get a way that you want to do so, or...
So, with, so with that, really, you know, the council approval for tonight will be, the council, if they, if they go that route, then that'll be the approval. Once you submit the permit for everything, that's when the clock would start. So, technically, you get the approval, and then you can submit the permit for the same thing, you know, later on, so that way you can kind of see how wood and materials and stuff are gonna go, so...
So, the approval's kind of indefinite?
We'll say there's gonna be a reasonable time, you know, on it, but yes, so once tonight hits, you know, you'll have time, and then we, you and I can kinda sit down with Jay, and we can make sure we have the timeline. The permit submitted is when the shot clock starts.
Okay, and I just, I need you to answer all those, you have the materials and the approval, which I've already approved, to pass. Okay, I'll give you soon then, thank you. Hopefully, we did offer it, thank you.
And I did make a motion?
I'll second it. Need further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Then we're gonna go, as while we're on the roll, we're gonna go on to item number five, which is the accessory building, request on the accessory building, that's just a combination of the two lots, adjacent to the green easement, right, and adjacent to the other lot, so do I hear a motion?
No question. So, on the ordinance that we passed on accessory buildings, I thought there was discussion and something about the buildings being all without a single-family dwelling, that it had to be, it had to share a lot line, not a green belt.
So, so this one is kinda unique, and I'm gonna let Mr. Boney kinda speak on this, and it's why it kind of came to this point. So, in the ordinance, it shows contiguous, that's kind of the definition, which is very broad, you know, we've looked at multiple kind of definitions, and contiguous in the sense that we looked at from the ordinance was sharing that property line. With the green belt or with the green easement there, obviously, that added some, you know, some confusion, some controversy. In one of the maps, you can kinda see the two lots, two plats together, he owns the properties on the other side of the green belt, which is kinda where they contiguous, we'll call the loose interpretation of contiguous. It wasn't like it was, you know, all the way on the other side and separated. Where it kinda shifted was, at least from the city manager's office, where it kinda shifted was in the design that he wanted to do for the building, and how he had the road, I said, okay, let's, let's bring it to P&amp;Z, let's kinda look at this. If you keep looking through after the pictures, you'll kinda see the, a little bit further, oh, yeah, that one right there, it's got the red, the red surveys. So, spoke with Mr. Boney on this, and he, him and I kinda chatted, and basically it came down to, I don't know what's gonna happen, but let's put it in front of council and P&amp;Z and see what, see what to do. And in my, and my thought process on this was, if you do it as it stands, the concern would be if you decided to go a different direction, put commercial property in there, that goes against what we're doing, it adds some risk to it. So, with the two contiguous properties side by side, if he replatted, removed that property line in the middle, it would then leave enough room for a single-family residential with septic, with aerobic, which would then kind of mitigate risk, or if he decided to be, you know, nefarious, we'll say, go against the ordinance and put commercial property, or try to sell it under the wrong kind of guise of it just being a storage unit, then it goes, then it, he has to sell both properties, he can't... it goes, then it, he has to sell both properties, he can't just sell it as, as one single one. Which then, because it goes to council, because there's kind of the resolution that supports the variance, uh, if it passes, then we have that public record that says, hey, if he does sell it, there's gonna be a single-family resident, you know, residential, uh, building on that property. Ideally, if, if that line was removed and there was a building, this is something that would fall 100% within our, our accessory building ordinances as it stands now, with size, dimension, everything. Um, so that's kinda where we are.
The green.
The green, so, where, the green belt is, we'll just say north is up on the paper. Yeah, yeah, sorry, uh, sorry, to the west, the green belt, so ideally this initially started where he, his property that he said was contiguous was on the other side of the green carports. With the direction that he's kinda going, was putting kind of that un, you know, undeveloped road out to Morgue Point Road, it kinda shifted from, okay, it's no longer really a contiguous type property, that's kinda what we're using the interpretation of the ordinance as.
That's what's been recommended.
And, and then it kinda shifted into, okay, now we need to do the variance process with council, get everybody's eyes on this and thoughts, because again, it kinda adds a unique component to it. It's trying to find that solution that could really go either way, but by removing that property line, submitting for the replat, it's kinda showing the commitment for him that, hey, I, I'm not selling this property, you know, as is, it's gonna be sold as, as a whole. Uh, and then it also kinda finds that solution to it. That was kinda where, where we're at. Again, it's mitigating risk, uh, that's kinda really all it is. Even the precedent's kinda set, I, I don't think it would set a negative precedence, it kinda sets that, what the variance is designed for.
Well, that's why, that's why I brought it up, is we had that discussion, because there was, there were things that had happened prior that, that weren't set in good, good faith and, and good representation. Um, I was just looking at this too and I just asked Mr. Boni here about, I mean, each of those lots are buildable lots individually.
Correct.
I mean, if he put the building on here, he could still sell that individual lot as for a single-family dwelling.
Exactly, and that's where, for, you know, for this kind of situation, by replating it as one property and removing that property line, then he can't do that and really kinda take advantage of the nefarious, or you know, kinda taking advantage of the, of the ordinances. It kind of eliminates that, that risk, where he would be forced to sell that property as a whole without that property line. So it's really just combining the two, saying, okay, if you're using this for storage, we wanna try to find that solution. Um, by removing the property line, he can't just build a home, have this, you know, other structure on the other property, it kind of becomes one package and that's kind of a commitment that you.
But his home is on Beachcomber.
His home is on Beachcomber.
And there will always be a green belt that separates him from this other property.
And so that's where it kinda was really, that's where the rub is. Cause, you know, contiguous was again, something that we needed to bring up again, cause the green belt, his house is not like contiguous offset, it was literally, you know, it was really just on the other side of it, so.
But when you own a piece of property owned this side of the green belt and this side of the green belt, you still own that property, it's just that, the city has no right to use that.
Not on, not on these, so there's, this is where the green belts get really confusing. There actually is some green belts that are not property line to property line, it's actually legitimate property owned by, you know, the city and there is no separation, unlike in easement or a green easement, which the property lines would be, would, would abut to each other and then there's a six or 10-foot or 20-foot easement. So this one is actually separated by property owned by the city. And that's kinda where some of the.
So that's not contiguous?
See, I, I think that's where the rub is, okay, I've read, you know, the state law and I, I'm even more confused and maybe Neil, you can help us with this. You know, contiguous to me always meant touching, sharing a border or whatever, but then I read something too and I think Jay pointed out, there was something that said, um, not counting easements, roadways, blah, blah, blah. Do you know what the correct, I mean, do you know what is the correct law on contiguous?
If it's contiguous, it's got to be adjoining.
It has to be touching border to border.
And so that's kinda where the variance kinda played in. And so really just from our, what we, what I wanted to kinda kick to council, you know, for, you know, for Mr. Boni and them was, I don't know direction that this is gonna go. You know, the interpretation of the variance could say, hey, you have this property here, there's a property on the other green belt, is it contiguous? Nope, but that's where, kinda why we wanted to put it in front of council for the variance. When he added the new component of the building with the road, I said, we really gotta go to council for it. Um, we, we basically told Mr. Boni and them to go to P and Z, he didn't do any of the replat or, you know, submit anything, this is kind of a, a run for him to, one, talk his, you know, what he wants. Um, and I, and I just wanted to afford him the opportunity to take it in front of council and get, you know, a collective.
So are we asking, is, is he asking for a variance?
Yes. He is asking for the variance to do it, you know, with conditions basically that he would replat, remove the property line, um, and then, and put the accessory building.
And another question I have, okay, it's replatted and you have your building, it's a pretty large building, 900 square feet. Okay, so you have your building on it, it's one flat, so you go, okay, I'm selling this as a homestead and I come in and buy it and you know what, I'm not gonna put my house up right away, but I'm gonna use that building. What prevents somebody from buying this replatted lot but only using the building? What, what is going to make them build a residence?
And based off of our ordinance, you know, before you kinda answered that, based off of our ordinance as it stands now, anybody who builds on a contiguous lot, once they sell that property or their, you know, whatever properties, you know, they have to remove all of those structures or, all the structures are, are improvements, I guess you could say, on that other contiguous property. So ideally, if I had a contiguous lot, I put a shed, put a patio, whatever, if I go and sell my house, I have to remove, or if I go and sell that land, I cannot sell it with improvements, I have to remove all of that stuff on there.
So, but I'm just gonna bring. If this green belt, if this little green belt section was not owned by the city, this problem will go away, right?
I would still bring it to council simply because of the unique situation with the road going, but yes, ideally speaking, if the green belt wasn't there, he could ideally put that building on the back of his property with road access directly to his own property, as long as it fell in line with.
Yeah.
For just a moment, so, um, your idea is a good one and that was actually one of the approaches. We, we've been here at Morgue Point at that address for about 25 years and whenever those lots became available, my intention was to have all of them, but builders gotta hold some up first, so I have the ones that you've seen from that. So I've always wanted to have an outbuilding back there, but we know that we have the issue with the green easement behind the house. Um, there is no access to that green easement so that, there's no utilities on it and there's no access to it. The only time that the city has actually come onto that easement, they've actually had to ask permission from me to be able to come through my property to get to it, because it's not accessible. So, one of the approaches to address contiguous property was, let's see if we can get all of our neighbors that adjoin that easement in agreement to just, let's see if we can buy it from the city or it's donated to us or wherever the case may be. So that was one approach and I was favorable to that and I actually got at that motion, but I think we decided that this approach that we're presenting today was also gonna work for us. You can tell I'm not too much of a, I've had the property for 15 years, so I'd like to build this accessory building, but I, I wanna find a way that works best for you.
Is there not anything the city can do to dedicate some sort of egress between his property on Beachcomber and this property? Cause I know there was a pool that was built on a property years ago that crossed over a green easement and we allowed plumbing to cross a, a green easement.
We also allowed the pool to be built, which, that wasn't any of us.
Nope.
But we also.
I know who it was.
It wasn't us. But they also allowed the pool to be built, you remember on, there was an easement and then the pool was built back there, which I don't understand at all how that passed, but.
But didn't that happen at Falls?
No.
No, no, they got permission from the council to build a pool back there and then later they came back and wanting to put the electrical under and they approved that.
I thought there was some kinda dedication for a 10-foot wide or something path across.
I don't know if they made.
The, the issue that would come in, and this is just from the, kind of the staff side.
I think the city gave them, the city granted them an easement across the green easement to put in this utility line, that's my reflection.
They granted them the easement when they did the electrical, I mean, to go under the easement, definitely, but the pool was, they got permission to put the pool in on that lot, so.
And so where, where we have to be careful and this is kinda where the bandaid kinda comes off of, we have to, the council has to kinda decide, if that's the direction we wanna go, all the green easements across the board could open up a can of worms and across the spectrum, you know, which then would go against our green easement with, you know, removing trees, you know, uh, other access, um, which again, every variance for every green easement under the sun could end up coming. So this was kinda that alternate solution of green easement stay, you know, we don't have to worry about all the, the potential negative impacts that could happen on every other green easement, um, on stuff that we have denied simply because of the green easement, cause then it raises the question of, well, how wide can the green easement be that we are gonna grant an access, you know, to? And we've, you know, there are some on there that are 200 feet wide that easily could, you know, cause of problems. We, we can bring it up and address those, um, if that's the direction that we, you know, P and Z and council wants to go. I just, I'll leave that one up to council.
I, I know that before, when there was an easement that, like you're talking about, no, the city had no use for it. We couldn't get our vehicles back there, we couldn't even walk back there without getting on private property. I know in the past, there's been abandonment of easements, I know that people have bought part of the easement or the easement that has been done in certain situations. I honestly would rather go that way because I think it's a little cleaner, because, uh, but I think if we do this, we are opening it up, I, I was real upset when they did the pool thing, cause it opened it up to, you know, so much and, I mean, definitely, my definition of contiguous has always been touching borders, whatever, and that's part of our ordinance, so, um, anyway, I would kind of like to see it, I just think it would be cleaner if we either looked at purchasing, uh, the easement, abandonment, something like that where it's clean.
And so here's.
And so everybody can't say, oh, well, you did this.
So we, we kinda looked at, it, it, we kinda scratched the surface superficially on this and Neil may be able to comment on this, it, it's gonna be clean for the residents, but for the city it won't be. Because what's gonna happen is, what makes, you know, Mr. Boni decide that he gets that and is, and how do we not prove that, you know, it's favoritism? Who draws that, those property lines? So an entire survey for every single green easement across the city would then have to be done and there probably is gonna have to be a bidding process or the auction process and Mr. Boni may not even get that property, so how do we define those property lines?
Well, I, I, I mean, how we've done it in the past and as it's come up or been requested or if somebody, uh, the builder or the surveyor get off, got off or whatever with, you know, some kinda condition, that's when we looked at each individual one. We don't have to take surveys and do all the easements at one time, I mean.
And we did it at market value.
Yeah, and that's, that's what, not that long ago, there was a, a young couple that purchased a house, y'all remember that? And everything cleared, title cleared and everything, and then they found out that they were into city easements back there and it was a big easement, but you couldn't really access it, it wasn't of use to the city and they were devastated because they were gonna have to remove their pool and it was really a financial impact on it and so, and I believe most of us were on the council, we looked at it, we got market value and we allowed them to do that. So I would rather look, since we've done that, but I'm afraid if we do this, then contiguous is out the window and we're gonna be looking at all kinds of easements, so, um.
My recollection is still, even before you, when those green easements were established, the public was given a right of way to use them.
Right away, that's right.
They were eventually, green easements were deeded to the city, but the public still has the right, you know, to, to pass through those easements anytime they want to.
Where, where the challenge comes with that is if it's a wooded easement, you can't remove, you know, the barriers based off the tree ordinance, you know, you can't, you know, remove, you know, live, you know.
Well, the point making is that, that even if, you know, if you were, although you own the green easement, if you were to sell it, you still cannot destroy the public's right to use it, to pass over.
For access, right, that makes sense. So what would you, what would you say is the cleanest way to do something like this, Neil?
There's not.
Okay, yeah. Okay, cause the other side of it too and, and, you know, really to, you know, to the point, you know, if, it, what could stop somebody from saying, hey, I'm gonna do a survey on some random green easement and, you know, I want the city to do it and then go and buy, even though it's still public right of way, public access, public easement, but could Mr. Boni or could anybody go in and say, hey, I wanna put a survey on that easement and we do it on a case-by-case basis? And at that point, where the subjectivity comes in could, could have a negative impact as well.
Cities never incurred any expenses because that's part of whatever they do. When they submit it, we always say that's an expense to the city, so, you know, um.
Looks to me like we're not gonna get this resolved tonight. I would like to see us come up with a solution if we're, if there is a solution. I mean, we sit here and grind this hard till it looks, looks like a mule, you know, and when I, when I come to a solution.
We're not calling you a mule, you understand?
No.
I'm talking about the situation, you know, but we, we, we feel Mr. Boni is, uh, definitely has a chance to do this, if we can do it.
Yeah.
But I think we need to come up with a suggestion of how we can do it, and I think Neil, look, please look at it and say, this is legal, this is acceptable, or not.
Well, here's one question I would have, I mean, every, every green easement, well, not everyone, but a lot of them are different, right? And, and it's been already said that this easement's not accessible. We can't get equipment there, we can't, basically we can't use it, the city can't use it. So, to answer your question about anybody just going to a green easement, no matter what size the easement is and saying, hey, I wanna get this part of it, uh, we need to have some kinda definition that says if it's unusable or whatever the legal terminology is, I don't know. And that'll way, okay, if we can do it with this one, but we can't do it with that one.
It isolates this situation.
Right.
Well, and so, and, and we've kinda tried to look at all variables, so the variable to that could be, so, and again, we can't be, have eyes on every, everything at all at once. If it is unusable and we say, okay, we're gonna do this, there could be opportunity there for either going to destroy the easement and make it usable or, there's, there's, again, we tried to look at every variable and I think at this point and, and to Mr. Boni's point, we just wanted to put it in front of council for that direction. Cause, a, again, I think there's a million different options that you can do, I don't think any of them are gonna be necessarily clean.
I think we just need to do a little more homework, cause we don't wanna set a precedent that we're gonna be seeing this time and time and time again, we don't wanna do that, but we wanna help Mr. Boni out to get good use of his property too, so I think we just need to go back to the drawing board, I, you know.
And, and, you know, from, from staff side, I mean, we, we can, we can definitely look, but we looked at, we looked at the green easement, at this point, we need council really to, to say, what direction do y'all want to see to kinda go that direction? We, we did look at the green easement, if, if council says, hey, we want him to do a survey and, and bring it back to the table, um, at the, at the pleasure of council, that's kinda the direction, cause going back to the drawing board, I'll be honest, we, we really dove into this heavily, we looked at this in numerous different ways, um, there, there's the lesser of all evils and, and that's kinda where we're at, so.
One other thing to think about is, if this easement is deemed as not usable or whatever the word is, and what's it doing the city any good to have it?
Well, and I think the green easements were for the aesthetic look of the natural or, yeah, so if, if we wanna, if, if that's, if that's the direction we wanna go with the green easements, uh, you know, in the future and start kind of, you know, adding that to the agendas of, what do we really want to have the future the green easements be, uh, we can do that as well and I think that's a separate.
But, but I do.
These are all citizens of all points, so, you know, you can't just arbitrarily, I don't think we can arbitrarily just give it away or separate.
No, they sell it, put the money back into the operating expense.
And we do not wanna get into making easements passable for our utilities that rarely are ever gonna use it, we would not spend that kinda money, that would be not a very prudent use of the city funds, so that, to me, that's not an option to do that.
If we, I think we're a tapestry, I think we owe Mr. Boni a decision, you know, on the next meeting. I think, and I think August meeting, we need to give him an answer, one way or other, but we don't need to leave him hanging, just agree.
I mean, I, I'm.
It's up to y'all, y'all are the ones that are gonna vote on us, that's your decision. Evidently, we're not, we're not, we're not getting anywhere right now.
Well, and, and, you know, and I'll, I'll be honest, if it's, you know, going back to the drawing board and the table and we're starting to look at green easements on what we're gonna do, we need more than a month, there's no way.
Well, I mean.
Realistically, you know, cause, cause we're, we're now gonna have to look at not just the situation, we gotta take, you know, the hundreds of acres of green easement that's out there and figure out, okay, what is every plausible situation that we have to look at that could potentially do it? Cause.
I, I think we need to take it on a case-by-case basis and be careful of setting precedents because that's how we've had to do it. We can't look at all of our easements in the city and come up with solutions for every scenario, we've gotta come up with guidelines to say, if in fact this easement is abandoned because of X, Y, Z, then we kinda set, to me, we set a format so that anyone else could follow that same format, but to me, we don't need to look at every single easement in the city, there's plenty of easements that people have access down to the lake and, you know, it is for the pleasure, it is for the passage, Neil's right, that's in your deed is for the passage. Neil's right, that's in your deed of covenants. It's a right of passage through, so we need to take that into consideration. And maybe it needs to be that people can still have passage through there. Allow it because that's part of their deed. Anyway, I just think, I think we need some more legal input.
If you sell it, what I'm saying is, if you sell the land, you cannot prevent, you can't do away with that public easement or passage process.
Yeah. I, I'm saying the same thing. I'm saying, you know, people could still-
And my objective of having an outbuilding up here doesn't really cross this.
No. Your outbuilding's not into easement.
People have foot traffic, might be walking across the easement, but other than that, there's really no, no change to it. So, anyway, I appreciate you guys.
So, it would have to be something where the easement remains clear, where the easement remains available for passage, that type of thing, so that we're kind of-
There's really been easy solutions to build. Build a house next on the other lot.
That seems to be enough.
Got a great lot there.
And, and I agree, you know, on the case-by-case basis, and that's kind of where we wanted to put it in front of council, was if, if we're going to do it on a case-by-case, then I think that's kind of where, okay, now we're, we're kind of at where we're at. If the recommendation, the recommendation from council is, "Hey, we would like to see you survey, you know, this section of it to make it, you know, contiguous," if, let's say it was contiguous, you know, and, you know, he could do, you know, a, a, you know, paved road or gravel road across, would that change, you know, the game? And if that does, and council says, "You know what? I think we can get on board with that," then that now provides Mr. Boni the direction of saying, "Okay, I'll get, I'll get the property line survey for this." And that's kind of where I was like, okay, so to Neil's point of, even if you did the survey, even if you spent the money on the survey and, and made it quote-unquote contiguous by property line, that's kind of where that loose interpretation of contiguous, the direction that we went, is even if we did that, there's still that public access easement. No matter what, that property line, all you're doing is taking an easement already and making it contiguous, which still is public access. So that was kind of where we eliminated the unnecessary part of that. So, but that's, that's kind of where-
I would just like to make sure that we have legal input into what we want to do because we will be setting a precedent.
Yeah, I get it.
And so we want to do the right thing. We want to try to help Mr. Boni. And we also want to stick to the ordinances we have, our definition of contiguous, or we're opening up a huge can of worms. I mean, I understand, we don't want to open that can of worms. So, anyway, I would just say, if it takes, you waited, you're so patient. And so, if it would take a couple months to try to come up with something that would meet all our legal and ordinance requirements and still help you to build on that, I'd like to see. And I know y'all have worked a lot on this, but-
In, in terms of time, you had, didn't plan to do anything until the weather breaks anyway?
Hey, there you go.
Couple months, a few days.
Okay. And I would like Neil's input on this, whatever's arrived at, because we don't want to go back to square one and have Neil tell us, "You can't do that." So we've got, you know, if, if, we've got, the decision we have to make needs to be through legal channels, and it needs to be good for one and good for all. So whatever we do, we want to make sure this is exactly what we want to do for everybody else. So, I have no problem tabling it. Do you need a motion, Dennis?
I think we should.
Okay. I move that we table Mr. Boni's request on his accessory building until there is more time to discuss it, go through legal channels, and see what kind of solutions we can come up with.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We can look for next month, but-
I mean, if he just comes back and says, "Hey, we got nothing."
Yeah, we can put it on there, and I can, I can give an update, but, and I'll get with Neil and stuff, but yeah, it's-
I want my schedule right of three, which are permit fees. Everybody, they were not in the package list on there, and I'm going, I'm going to turn it over to Dalton because I have not looked at it other than just recently myself.
So, this, this one was kind of, we wanted to open up for discussion whether we could act on it or not, or whether we could act in part or conditionally. We at least wanted to put something on the table to show what can happen or where we are as far as permit fees going forward. So whether it's for final plat, preliminary plat, every city has them in some form or fashion. We provided, in one section, we provided some comparable cities as far as lakefront or, or similar population to ours. And then I also provided the city of Belton's too, just as a kind of comparison. And they're all relatively, you know, pretty similar. You know, for us, outside of it just being a part of every other city, you know, for, you know, for fees, for preliminary plats and, and other items, staff resourcing and time, you know, takes a huge chunk out of that. And I, I know council member Donna had brought, you know, brought this up before. You know, we're always sending certified letters to, you know, to people, the amount of time that it takes to do a lot of these projects, you know, for, you know, for plat review, engineering review and all these. I don't even want to say it's a revenue stream, it's not even a revenue stream, but it's, it's, it's definitely a loss for us to, to not get on board kind of with what other municipalities are doing.
Look, you've got other, other cities' fees also, so we got to prepare it there.
And so, we, we can make, make, again, we can always come back and say, "Okay," you know, we can always pivot and kind of adjust as needed. This was kind of a, hey, don't need to kick the can down the road any further. Let's at least put something on the table, do some research and kind of see. We're, we're not going to go wrong really any direction that we kind of go, and they're all, all on par together. So.
I, I think we just, we got our hard copies tonight, so I know personally, we haven't been able to spend enough time kind of looking at them. I'm totally in favor of us having some fees. You know, working up at City Hall and doing annexations and zoning and all of that was a tremendous amount of time with myself and the city staff, and with zero return, and we had put a lot of expense into it. So I'm totally for this. I just think we need to have a little more time for council to maybe study and review it.
Need a motion?
Say we just table it till next meeting?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and it ends up continually backtracking. We'll go into item two.
This is a unique way of doing things. I like it.
Well, actually, you know.
Keeps us on our toes, Dennis.
Keep it in front of the audience.
Yes, right.
They're all filling out-
You never know where it is.
Yeah, shooting spears at you. Okay, this is our, this is 21-04 Authorization and Order of Arrenging Issues of City of Morris Point Resort Texas Certificate of Obligation. This is our water story, right here. Do I hear motion to accept it and discuss? Yeah, we discussed this thing for about a year and a half to going on two years. We're, we're pretty far down the road.
I think I just have, I mean, we're, I'm, I'm totally for doing this, but I just have a few questions, and I'm not sure, Jeff, if this may be something that you could answer, or maybe we need to. I talked to Dalton about this yesterday. I'm just a little confused about some of the verbiage in the ordinance, because on the ordinance itself, I know it talks about the levying of taxes is how we pay for it, and then it says that we're limited not to exceed $1,000 of revenues of water and sewer. That's in B on the first page of the ordinance. Then you go down to E, and it said, "The city is authorized by section blah, 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 Texas Local Government Code, to pledge the revenues of the utility system to the payment of certificates of obligation." To me, that says the opposite. And, and then when you go to the definition of utility system, it's water and sewer. So, to me, I'm just not clear. You can only pledge up to 1,000. You can pledge the revenue from it. So, I'm not real clear on that. Did you find out anything from the-
Yes, and hold on one sec. I'm pulling up the email now. So, from, so from our bond counsel, and we have bond counsel for this, you know, they're, they're out of Houston, so they're really the ones that kind of, the legal side of things to make sure that we're in compliance with the Attorney General's office, and that we're in compliance with, you know, how we're going to go about our bonds, especially in this time with, with our kind of unique situation, I guess you could say. And so, bond counsel came back and, and, you know, we looked at a couple, and he basically said that you've got to pledge something to it, and so you're not limited to it. They all have some sort of pledge, and since this is a combination tax and revenue bond, you can in part or in whole apply any amount to that, that revenue bond. So, it's that, and Neil may be able to speak from the legalese side of things. It's just a legal roundabout way of saying you have to put a number in there. And so what they didn't want to do is say, "Hey, you can pledge up to an amount." It's almost kind of like a long-term lease of a dollar. You know, you can't give it away. You, you can do like a hundred-year lease at a dollar. It's kind of a similar situation where they put into the bond terms, and the $1,000 was, was the term. So you can still do regardless.
I'm just not clear on that because it says not to exceed 1,000. So I would think if we're passing an ordinance, we wouldn't be allowed to exceed 1,000. Does that make sense to say, "Oh, it's an arbitrary number. You don't have to go by that because it's in an ordinance"? I mean, I'm just confused. I'm not saying it's wrong.
So, I'll, I'll read it, I'll read it verbatim. It's a quirk of how COs work, but legally COs are generally required to have some type of revenue pledge, even though they are a general obligation, tax pledge debt, slash tax pledge debt. The revenue pledge is typically characterized as either a limited pledge like here, up to 1,000, or a surplus revenues, the very bottom of the flow of funds of revenues after all M and O and revenue bonds have been paid. That said, practically, you can still pay any portion of the debt service on the CO system revenues, and oftentimes, there are sufficient revenues to pay debt service so that a city doesn't need to levy higher ad valorem taxes to pay the CO. So, the, basically, it's you pledge something, or you do a surplus, which they would say the only time we can even apply revenue would be if there was surplus funds after all the setting done.
Not being a lawyer, it sounds to me like we're pledging the, our tax revenue just as well as we are the-
Well, we are, we definitely are saying our tax revenue, but when something says to me in a legal document, "We can't exceed 1,000," then when we go to pull money from revenues from the water and sewer, I'd rather see it worded surplus from, you know, you can use surplus. I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a word person, and when you say that to me, it means not exceed, means not exceed. And so, can we, can we change the verbiage and say?
I'm going to defer to Neil on this one.
Okay. Do we have to put in?
I have to defer to bond counsel. That's why you have it.
Yep.
Okay, well, to me, to me, it's two different things. Can't exceed it, and then you can pledge it. I don't get that. Then you revert back to, "You can't exceed 1,000." And it's a water project. It doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't be able to pledge surplus from our water. So I'm uncomfortable with it, just-
Jeff, are y'all comfortable with where the verbiage on it this year, the lender?
Yeah, we're fine. I mean, we're deferred to bond counsel as well.
Okay, I mean, if you're, if you're the one that's, you're the one that's doing-
Essentially, the whole thing's a, a, a letting of our taxes.
I mean, I think as long as the lender is, is okay with it, we ought to be able to pay with it.
You don't care how you pay.
Regardless of how we pay.
No, and, and from, and from the municipal-
I think it's more of an internal function for y'all.
Yeah. And, and for, for us, you know, deferring to Neil on this and deferring to bond counsel, I mean, no matter what, even with this, you know, from the contractual side, we're always going to defer to bond counsel and financial advisors anyways on that. Because they're the ones that deal, you know, that deal with all the Attorney General stuff and everything else. And, and, so, with the, with the language on it, you know, from clarification from bond counsel on that, I defer to Neil on that. So.
Okay, do you have any other suggestions on that?
I'm kind of like Donna. I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but still there's a number there. And that's, that's what kind of bothered you a little bit.
Doesn't it say, "You're pledging up to $1,000 of tax revenue with the balance of it coming from, from operations, from revenue from the-"
Well, the, the way it says it, pledges ad valorem. It doesn't give an amount of the ad valorem number, but it gives a number of from the utility system, of, up to 1,000. So it does, it doesn't mention a number from your ad valorem taxes, but it does set, it does set $1,000 as the limit we can take from our water and sewer system. That's my concern. And then, and then a couple later, it tells you you can take from the utility system. I hate to cause problems, but to me-
I kind of agree though too, if the lender's okay with it.
Well, and in bond counsel, bond counsel ultimately works with us. You know, bond counsel, you know, even though the Horizon Bank, you know, kind of saw them out, it worked out for the city, ultimately, we're the ones paying for the bond counsel for their advice and guidance on it. So, in the future, when we have financial advisors that tie into bond series and multiple bonds, even financial advisors are going to defer to the bond counsel, and the bond counsel is going to be the ones that drive that train with the Attorney General with, you know, kind of the direction that we go. So-
So you're pledging up to 1,000, up to $1,000 of water and sewer revenue with the rest of it coming from-
Not to exceed 1,000.
Up to, up to 1,000 dollars, up to 1,000 dollars. And the balance of it has to come from-
Ad valorem.
Ad valorem taxes.
Yeah, well-
We still have to pay it. I mean, there's no reason, how we-
What they're, but what the bond counsel said was, it didn't matter how you paid it. They had to put in an arbitrary number, is what you were reading.
Yes, because it, it, from, again, I'm, I'm just going off of what his email said. It's either, it's either a number on the, you pledge an amount, or you put in the other language that says you only do surplus. So if you go the other route, it's still limited to the only, only surplus could be applied to the revenue you can add.
I'd rather do surplus, because you're not going to make a payment out of something you don't have surplus in. I'd rather see surplus in the verbiage than to up to $1,000. You know, if we had, if we had $10,000 in surplus, we could use that toward this, which is a water project. I, you know, I mean, I'm not the expert, they're the expert, but it just, if I read this, I would be, you can't do anything other than $1,000 coming in our water proceeds. That's how I read it. And, you know, as long, as long as it's noted that I have that problem with it. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with the project whatsoever, but I do have a project, I do have a problem with the language, is how it's worded. And I don't, I would not be comfortable in a budget if we took money out of the water, surpluses.
And this is, and this is, again, why, why goes the council. I mean, if y'all want to table it for the language and, and defer to Neil and, and the bond counsel again, and make sure that all the legal, the city attorney side, that's-
You're not deferring to me, you're referring to bond counsel.
Yeah, bond counsel.
But, but that's what I'm saying, is I'm, I'm always going to defer to Neil and, and, you know, as the city attorney, because at this point, I, we, we bring broad counsel in because that's bond counsel. But if the language is not comfortable with making a motion tonight, then that's, that's, that's not the council.
I still believe the lender is okay with it, the bond counsel's okay with it. I mean, that's, what else do you think?
I would like to, I would like to see-
We're going to have to pay it regardless, so I will get it out.
I, I would like to proceed with it, but I would like to see, to go back to bond counsel and ask if that language could be changed to surplus, which is what I'm hearing the bond counsel say from your message. If not, we just go with what they say. They're the experts. But if-
So, I mean, it, it, I mean, I, there could be conditional stuff. I, that's, so I don't, if the motion is with conditions, if they turn, turn around and give us guidance on the surplus, I, I don't know. So we would, we're kind of in uncharted territory.
If they say it has to be written like this, they're the experts. If they say, "No, you, you can do 1,000, or you could do surplus from your water proceeds," what I'm telling you is I would be more comfortable with that option.
We can, we can ask.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's what I would, I would take that out of it.
I'm in an amount.
You know, these attorneys.
We have to, a motion to table this for more information or what.
I'll make the motion to table it, still, if the wording's right, that, that we're all looking for.
Or just checking.
Especially over this much time.
We're going to have budget meetings coming up, where, you know, we, you know, we're going to have budget meetings come up. We could take action on this a lot quicker than a month from now. But I just want to make sure, if they're giving us that option, in my opinion, paying for it out of surplus makes more sense than limiting us not to exceed a certain amount when it's a water project. You know, so anyway, I, I would be more comfortable. Y'all do whatever you want, but I'd be more comfortable if we can-
I'll second the motion.
Sure about it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your vote?
And Jeff, I have one question. There was also on page 11 where it said, "The note can be called in at any time."
Yes, so-
Yeah, because I asked him to.
Yeah, so, so the, the, we got from bond counsel from the clarification is that we could pay the note without penalty. A lot of bonds would have a penalty if you pay early. We have no penalty if we pay.
Okay. But they can't call the note due at any time.
No, no, no. Because it's essentially, you can pay it early, do whatever you want to with it, no prenup, anything of that stuff.
I'm not sure if the bonds have had to pay it.
And that's where the, that's where the same thing, you know, as, now, what I don't know, a, and again, I, again, I've never had this happen before in uncharted waters. I'm not sure what bond counsel's going to come back. I don't know where this, what this does to the process. You know, we could table it for a month, but when it comes to the ordinances, you know, for it, I have no idea what's, what's going to come. So.
Well, it sounds like the bond counsel gave you an answer. We just need to maybe clarify a little bit.
Well, and, but I'm saying as far as tabling the approval of the ordinance, you know, for that, a month, I don't know what that's going to do.
We didn't say, look, the next meeting that we have, we can-
Well, no, but, but as far as tabling the ordinance and not doing it at all, I don't know how that affects, you know, the, the public hearings, the process, how the Attorney General kind of goes through things. Because the whole process with the Attorney General, you know, it's not just one ordinance. It dives into a whole new set of realms that I, I'll have to get more clarification on. So I, I don't know, even if it's August, it could potentially delay it even more, and I just don't know yet. So I'll have to-
Miss, Miss question, Dalton. Is it feasible to get an answer by, say, this weekend, by Friday?
I mean, as soon as tomorrow morning, I'm going to call bond counsel.
You, you want to have a call meeting for-
I'm fine with a call meeting if something comes up.
Thursday afternoon or Thursday, Thursday, if we can get an answer, if we can get this thing going?
Well, we have to be 72 hours out.
Three days.
Yeah, so at the earliest, we'd be able to do, technically, it'd be Monday.
You think we get by with that? You think we get by with that?
I mean, well, yeah, well, I mean, we should have answers and stuff by, by then. So we'd have to call a special session, um, we have, we have seventy-two hours out.
We gotta get this going, folks, we gotta get it going. So, do you think we get, Neil, do you think we get by with it till Monday?
I think so.
Let's do that.
Or, or, like I suggested, we could also say, if that verbiage, if that's the only verbiage we have to have, we can pass it with that in place, saying, if there's another option to pledge surplus money, that's the option we prefer, and we can still pass it.
Well, and that's, and again, that's, whatever motion, whatever motion y'all, like I said, that...
You'll be comfortable with that?
Initially, that, initially, that's what I thought it kinda went down, but there was another motion to table it, so...
Yeah, no, no, I mean, and there's a motion, I mean, there's a motion second on the table, so, um, they could either change it, or we could just vote it down. But that's a suggestion, we could take action, stay on the same calendar, but just have the note, if we can do surplus, as opposed to having a maximum amount we can spend...
Or it may, it may even make a difference.
Yeah, we're gonna write it in.
Then what happens if that...
What do we need?
Yeah, we've already got one, so we gotta...
Well, we have to know that we're comfortable, we need to make a motion with that, and see if we're comfortable.
Yeah, you'd have to retract.
So is that where we're at? I mean, is everybody good with that, or is it...
You make the motion, I'll...
Well, they've got a motion on the table, so we gotta, they need to get rid of their own motion.
I'll make the most, I'll retract my motion on the table.
Table, we're gonna retract the table.
I'll retract in a second.
Retract a second. And so we're gonna go back to original, original is gonna be, we're gonna approve the tentative to...
Contingent upon.
To the language being checked, to see if we can use any other language other than a thousand.
If we can use the other language to surplus from our water, as opposed to a maximum of a thousand dollars.
Yeah, otherwise, it will be approved.
Is that a motion you made?
Yes, that's why...
Then I'll second that motion.
Okay, that, is that agreeable? Dalton, do you guys have that?
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll get clarification and, and...
I think Donna made a motion, and I'm gonna make a second, and Labor, did you?
When are we gonna get communication?
I'm gonna send an email tonight.
No, 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 telling us what happened.
He'll email us, he'll, he'll, two years.
As soon as I get, get one back, then we'll, uh, I'm sure Jeff and I will both be blowing up, uh, bond counsel's phone, trying to figure out the, the language.
You can email us, though, that, can you, Don?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll, I can, I can...
We'll, we'll email within the next two days, I'll tell you.
Well, I'm just saying, by Friday.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and I just wanna tell the citizens, this is a huge groundwater project we're doing, over two million dollars. We wanna get it right. We wanna do it, we need it desperately, but we wanna get everything right for y'all. So, um, that's what it, that's what it's about, your groundwater storage, so...
Okay, moving on to next item six, uh, order's twenty, twenty-one, day, code three. Uh, we're gonna have a little garbage rate increase. Basically, uh, there's one asking to have the monthly garbage rate change, charge to customers for residential garbage pickup. Will be fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents, plus sales tax of a dollar twenty-three per household, for a total of sixteen dollars and fourteen cents per month. The new rate will be effective July twenty-one billing. This is with waste management. They do raise the rates on occasion, that is part of their contract. Uh, so we're going up, uh, not a whole lot, but it's still, it's a little bit. And, uh, there it is, folks, I need just, uh, need a motion to accept that, or discuss it.
I'll make the motion, we accept the rate increase proposed. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
It's sixty-five cents, with tax. That's what it is.
It's every year, too.
All in favor? Any opposed? What's your carry? Okay, next one is, uh, taking appropriate action on, uh, the Brisbane healthcare benefits. Dalton has looked around, and they've come up with another provider for some of our healthcare benefits, uh, saving some money, so I'm gonna let you take it from there.
Yeah, really, really, no, no action needs to be taken on this, all this will come out in kind of budget timeframe. Uh, but I wanted to introduce Prince and Benefits, Chris Leverett, he's here with us, and really kinda talk about why we brought them on board, um, kinda what they can do for our employees. Um, really, the bottom line, and I won't steal his thunder, but, you know, we have TML insurance for our employees. It's really never been renegotiated. We're looking at a six percent increase this year alone. Um, I've worked with them before, and, and I'll let Chris take it away.
Sure. Hello, counsel. My name is Chris Leverett. I'm with Prince and Benefits. We are a, an advisor and advocacy agency located in Dallas, Austin, and Austin, and, uh, in Fort Worth area. Our role is in the core of who we are. It is an advocate in a space. We're advocate first, at, at the strategic level, to help both private and public organizations, uh, managing control health and healthcare costs. We advocate at the administration level, helping the staff of the city manage their benefit programs. And we, uh, the core of who we are is we advocate for your, your employees, helping navigate healthcare, uh, insurance world. I have been in business for over twenty-five years, and I, I've started working with, uh, the public sector for over eight years now. Oftentimes, I've come across cities that are, um, in the state pool, uh, which I need representation. They need help, they need, they need consulting, uh, they need an advocate, uh, if you're on your own, if you will. So, we do many things. I, I prepared a very simple summary for you, to give you highlights of office of benefit consulting. We help the city shop and manage the RFP process. We go out and look for other providers. We, uh, are helping the city make the choices within your current program. We had found that, uh, the state, state pool, through Texas Mist Really, uh, was making changes to the cross for shield. There were options that were, that were available in the city, uh, that were denied. They felt like the city didn't, wasn't the appropriate risk. And so, before I came on board, the city was gonna have to incur about six percent increase in premium for, for a less than better. So we were able to manage an RFP, substantiate that the pool was still a competitive option at the time. But bring to the table, you know, and, and lobby, um, to, to TML as your independent advisor, and, and bring together more competitive options with your incumbent, uh, TML. So our work is done, and so then, we're also in the communication business, uh, to help, help the staff, promote enrollment, uh, implementation, uh, bringing together, uh, bringing new benefits to the table that have been available to employees, such as, uh, better dental, lower cost dental and vision benefits, offer additional, uh, life disability benefits, uh, with, with the savings that we, that we achieve. Again, the employees now have, have a place to call. It's actually called the Purple Card, it's not an entity in company, that's just what we call our customer service unit. So when your employees and their families have problems with their insurance, they're gonna be able to make a phone call to one of our patient advocates. We have dedicated patient advocates that are assigned to the city employees. They'll be on a first-need basis, and, uh, it's their job, and all the insurance companies, calling even a doctor, hospital, or pharmacy, and help that employee solve their problems. Or it could be something very simple, the laws of their ID cards, they don't understand their benefits. And so, in, in the end of the day, we were able to, uh, deliver a more competitive package to the city, and bring service and value to the benefit that we're much needed.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and that, I'm sure we'll be asking more questions as we dwelve into this thing during budget time. So, uh, it's a good overture, so we've gotta have something to look at, but I'm sure we'll have comparisons to the specific figures coming through.
Well, we'll, we'll have exact numbers, but really, the, the range that we're saving, as of now, with, you know, with everything, is we're providing more benefits to our employees that were never offered before, and with all of that, we're saving about twenty-one to twenty-four thousand dollars in benefits this year, so, compared to the six percent increase that we were initially looking at, which was gonna take away from, even though we pay a hundred percent for the employees, those or families would have seen a decrease in their paychecks, but now, we'll actually see a little bit of an increase, uh, for what's added, so...
Well, we appreciate you, Dalton, too, for your suggestions.
We certainly appreciate your presentation, sir. We will be in touch.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, very much. And so, uh, we're not gonna take the appropriate action on that, that was an introduction, so no, no action required, so we'll go on to the next item. And that's setting a date for our, Doug, uh, public hearing for our budget workshop.
So two, it's kinda two things, the, the, setting the date time for the public hearing, public hearing, uh, for August. It's recommended for August tenth, but we're trying to, and I'll have an updated, uh, timeline, um, for some reason, uh, I, I wasn't able to get it in here. I think I had it on my desktop, and, and got, lost track of time. But trying to keep everything within the regular council meetings and minimize the special sessions if need be, we're still kinda leaving that buffer in there, just in case, if we do need it.
Go August tenth, or do it...
August tenth is, is the regular, uh, council.
It's a regular council, I guess, that'll go down.
So ideally, we'd be setting the, the, the public hearing for that, which we can set the public hearing and vote on the budget, uh, that night. Hold on, so, real quick, we're... Hold on, well, and so we have, we have flexibility, we can do both if we want. But setting the public hearing on the budget, proposing, if counsel can do it, is to do the workshop, special sessions, the third and the fourth, setting two nights, ideally getting one night and having a backup night, just in case.
Yeah, August?
August third and fourth, Tuesday and Wednesday.
And are either of those, they're not public hearing?
No, tho-, yeah, both, both of those will, will just be the workshop for counsel to dive into everything. And that'll give us two nights to, to do anything, and then still give us, gives us a buffer, but it's just setting the timeline for the public hearings for the budget. And if we get it on the table, we can always, if we need to, we can always make changes. But as soon as we start getting outside of the changes, special sessions will have to start coming. So we at least wanted to set the, the timeline now, because, um, and Neil can kind of confirm this, you gotta have the thirty days, you know, prior for certain things, you gotta adopt the budget before you can adopt the tax rate, and all of those have, you know, front and back ends, and so this falls in line with all those requirements that we'll need to do for newspapers and everything.
So what, what time is that on August third?
August third and fourth, but six P., we do the six P. M. or whatever time y'all want, do the six P. M. Six here at the community center?
I just, uh, wanna remind, I, I already told Dalton and the mayor before, I will not be at the tenth. Be my third one, I missed in thirty years, so, got a pretty good record, very... Yeah, I know, I know, what can I say? But I'd rather be on the...
I, I mean...
You know how I am with the budget, uh, but I, I'd rather be on the...
We'll do it on the second or third and fourth.
Well, and...
You'll have it all, you'll have it all done.
The reality of it is, the bottom line, y'all are gonna have more knowledge and understanding of, of the budgets come to workshops, and we're gonna have everything resolved by then. That, I mean, that's, we're, we're diving into that more than we ever have before. Departments are doing a phenomenal job, they're diving into it, uh, they've been working really hard, so... Third and fourth, we're gonna, we'll get all that stuff. And put it this way, put it in the perspective, there are cities that have fifty-one-plus-million-dollar budgets that get workshops done in two days. So if we take the full two days, we're gonna take one.
Or you're doing it. Not us.
Hey, all I can do is, all I can do is advise, and counsel that runs with it from there.
And present, come on now.
Donna, would you like to do the Borden Point auxiliary report, like you normally do, kinda give us a brief, an offer to that, or whatever?
Yeah, let me see what that is.
We're getting close, folks, we're getting close.
Almost, okay, here's the auxiliary report. Uh, they said, "Thank you for the opportunity to update everybody of their upcoming events. They're having a meeting Thursday, the fifteenth, that's this Thursday, here at six P. M., they invite everybody. Be on the lookout, they have new auxiliary teachers to show their love and support of the fire department. They're gonna be having those. Barbara Lyman has, has coordinated the water aerobics this year, and, uh, they thank the city for allowing them to have the Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to ten each week for their water aerobics. And, uh, they're gonna be promoting the Miss Flames contest, which they have every year. They provide a thousand-dollar scholarship, uh, and two, two of the Miss Flames are already attending school and use the thousand-dollar scholarship. And personally speaking, we had a dog that was Miss Flame years ago, it was only five hundred back then. But we appreciated that five hundred toward her college education. And then, uh, they're gonna, they're kicking off September, they're gonna do their cops and robbers, and the hot-on-your-tail five K, and, uh, the nosy neighbor run. So they have people coming in curlers, and I guess it's like a Miss Kravitz, to date myself, if y'all remember Miss Kravitz type of thing. They're gonna do the jailhouse cook-off on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, and they've got sponsor forms, registration forms, they're gonna have cook teams. Anyway, everything's gonna be on the website, so they really encourage people to support it. Costumes, they said, are encouraged, like I said, people come in robes and slippers and the whole nine yards. They're gonna do a silent auction and a bake sale, and they said, they're always ready to help wherever they can, and they wanna thank everybody for their continued support of all their events and their fundraisers. And they also have a Facebook page, uh, if you just go on the Ladies Auxiliary, NPR VFP, and just hit like, then you get all their good messages they sent, and that's from Karen Steiger. And I just have one other announcement, we had an officer, Borjna, you know, he's our youngest officer, he is doing such a phenomenal job. Anyway, he was just promoted to patrolman two, so we wanna pass on to him our congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, Dalton will give you a brief, three minutes.
Yeah, no, we covered most of this, so, I, really, I think the big one, um, touch on roads, you know, roads obviously is an ongoing thing, if we can get the weather and Mother Nature to stop, we'll hot mix and get roads done. So unfortunately, that's our biggest holdup, is we have roads cut, we're not gonna start cutting new roads until we can get our existing roads done, um, and we're waiting on the weather. So as soon as the little mini lake beltens all over the place go away and dry out, we can hot mix and, and get them packed down. The other thing is, is Morgan's Point Resort has a new finance director.
Yay!
Started last week, um, so I'm not gonna really necessarily put him on the spot and have him do a speech, even though I thought about it, but, um, Kerry Erskine, uh, joined us last Tuesday. He's, you know, has a lot of ties that I didn't even really know about, uh, when we first met, and we're excited to have him on board, so he's, uh, hitting the ground running, so, welcome.
Good for him. Okay, Dalton, is Dalton here? I mean, I'm Dalton, she's, but, Terrence, I saw him earlier, is he still here? Does he, okay, Steve, you, you have anything to say?
Donna covered it.
Okay, I guess Terrence is gone, so we'll let him go. Okay, counsel, y'all have any questions, any comments you'd like to make?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank y'all for all y'all's comments for the parks and stuff, it, it means something to us to finally hear some, some good news.
Yeah, we appreciate all the feedback you gave us.
We thank everybody for attending. We are gonna have a special section, which we will have to have, uh, close the quarter, the executive section, excuse me, executive section. And, uh, we will re-adjourn if you would like to make yourself at home outside and play on the, in the playground, and, and over zip lines, and, and anything you'd like to else to play with for a while, and then you can come back in.
Tell them, tell them, you take that, you take the Texas government.
Thank y'all.
Oh, yeah. The executive section, okay, since everybody's ready, they get their phone, five-five-one, four-seven-four-six. Give you the city manager. Give you the city manager.
Get that in the notes.